All right. Good evening and welcome to the Ortonville Village Council regularly scheduled meeting for August 23, 2021. It is 7:02 PM and we welcome you and we call to order. We would like to have our pledge of allegiance this evening led by trustee Dialis if you would please rise.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jenna, please get the roll call in here.
President.
George.
President.
Green.
President.
Hayden.
Here.
Niwa.
Here.
Randazim.
Here.
Bryce. Yes. President. Thank you. Item number four this evening will be the approval of the agenda for August 23.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Hayden, supported by trustee Niwa. Do we have any questions, comments at this time? All right, Jenna, please. George.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hayden.
Yes.
Niwa.
Yes.
Randazim.
Yes.
Dialis.
Yes.
Bryce.
Yes.
That motion carries seven zero. Item number five will be the minutes from the August 9, 2021 meeting and we're looking for an approval of those council minutes.
Make a motion to approve the council minutes as presented.
Support.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Green, supported by trustee Niwa. Do we have any questions, comments, changes at this time? All right, Jenna, please. Green.
Yes.
Hayden.
Yes.
Niwa.
Yes.
Randazim.
Yes.
Dialis.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hayden.
Yes.
Bryce.
Yes.
That motion carries seven zero. Next up is the dispersments, which end on August 15, 2021, for the amount of $24,394.99.
Make a motion to approve the dispersments in the amount of $24,394.99.
Trustee George, support.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table by trustee Green and it's supported by trustee George. Do we have any questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, please. Hayden.
Yes.
Niwa.
Yes.
Randazim.
Yes.
Dialis.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Bryce. Yes. That motion carries seven zero. Next up is our public comments for this evening and our first public comments will be on agenda items only at this time. Later on in our agenda, you will see a public comment section on non-agenda items. If you have any agenda items, we welcome you to raise your hand, stand up and speak. Just keep in mind there is a three-minute limit, please. We would love to hear you. All right, everybody's so loud tonight. Thank you very much. Item number eight is our consent agenda. For this evening's meeting, we have the monthly review revenue and expense report, the treasurer's report from July 2021, the Fireboard Authority minutes from January 20th, 2021, the Historical Society minutes of July 13, 2021, the Parks and Recreation Committee minutes of August 2, the Park and Rec September Fest meeting of August 4, the RRC Committee minutes of August 5, the IT Committee minutes of August 17. And we would also like to recognize September as the National Recovery Month and National Suicide Prevention Month. So as you can see, we've had a very busy August. We are looking to entertain a motion for our consent agenda.
I don't think we have the IT Committee minutes.
Yes, we do not have the.
I thought you didn't email it this afternoon?
Nope, we did not email it today.
Okay.
There'll be a next meeting that day.
So...
My apologies, I was too late.
We can approve it with striking or do we have to approve it and change it and then approve it again? Because it's not as presented, correct?
With the exception of the IT Committee.
We can do that. All right.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the deletion of the IT Committee minute meetings of August 17, 2021.
Support.
All right. We have a motion on the table by trustee Green, supported by trustee Hayden. Do we have any other questions, comments or wish to obstruct anything? All right, hearing none. Jenna, we're ready, please. Niwa.
Yes.
Randazim.
Yes.
Dialis.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hayden.
Yes.
Bryce.
Yes.
And that motion carries seven zero. And next up is item number nine, which is our trustee committee updates and this evening we'll start with the Wayfinding Supplement, please.
I have no new, nothing new to report since last time.
Thank you very much. And we'll hear from the streets.
Nothing to report.
Excellent. How about the RRC Committee? You want to take that one?
Sure, you'll see our minutes were in the consent agenda items from the last RRC Committee meeting. We are making pretty good headway. We are almost to the point of having deliverables for council to see. There's lots of items we're working on, but you know, sometimes there's some growing pains to getting into the, into the habit of trying to knock something out every time we meet. So we're getting there. We should see some movement here shortly.
Thank you. Planning Commission Committee, please.
Nothing new to report with Planning Commission.
All right. And Personnel Committee, who would like to take that?
Nothing new to report on any of them.
Besides the upcoming review.
I don't think we've met since.
Yeah, well, we'll talk about it later, right? All right. Park and Rec Committee, please.
Really, nothing other than what I put in, had put in the packet, the minutes from the pickleball that we're working on diligently. We have lots of people interested in it and doing a lot of work behind the scenes. I'm playing catch-up a lot of the time because they're moving faster than, than me. So also the September Fest is coming up and there's lots of things going on as usual. We have a couple of new things, not new, they're reintroduced, we want to reintroduce them, which is the beautification award and we have always done, we did it in the past years ago. And you just pick a few houses that, you know, really have, you know, just, they look good on the outside, the lawn and all the flowers and everything, just make it a really nice thing. And I think it's a really good way to include the community and show them, you know, that we, you know, we do appreciate all the work that they do on their homes because a lot of times they're unsung heroes. And we have so many that I'm really having a difficult time narrowing them down. So, and then we thought if possible, we could try to do at least one every month. You know, we've got October coming up for Halloween, we've got Christmas coming up, you know, maybe January, February, I don't know, might not be too much during those times. But the months that there are things, we'd like to continue doing this. And what's the other thing? Oh, the car show years ago also, H D going back, but we still have all the plaques in the village offices. And the way we did it before was one, two of us would go out. I was one and Allie Champion was the other and she would pick a car from 1950 and up and I would pick a car older than 1950. And we would take pictures, have made it right aid real quick. We already had the plaques and we would just put them on, we'd give them a plaque and we'd keep a plaque in the office. So we're trying to also reintroduce that for September Fest.
We have continued to do that every year. That is.
Oh, you have? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was misinformed.
I think some of them might not be up on the wall.
We're missing at least one going in order.
But they're there.
Okay, okay. Well, we're going to continue that tradition there and I think it's a good one and it's another way to, you know, not just thank, a lot of times they are our residents, but sometimes they're not and that keeps them coming back to Ortonville because they love having plaques, they love having their car recognized and a number of different places do it. I know Randy Wise always has many that they give out and there's many other organizations within the village that give them out too, so yeah.
Please.
That's all, thank you.
Next up is the committee update, please.
Apologies for not being minutes done in time for the meeting, but I can do it without it. We did have a meeting last week and IT Right joined by Zoom and what we did is we discussed about the coverage and reviewed all the coverage we have through them. Basically, they cover everything inside of our firewall. There are some things that are not excluded, you'll see the full details, but they have a pretty comprehensive set of services that they provide for us to ensure that our computers are protected and covered and taken care of. We also did a review of the current hardware and software inventory. The server status is, it is getting older. It probably has about maybe one or two years of reasonable service life left before we really should consider replacing it. It's also running an older O S version of Windows Server 2012. After discussing it, we decided that it'd probably be a good idea to target replacing that in the next year's budget, 2021, 2022 budget. So that's going to be an item for budgeting next year that we probably want to include some money for that cost. We looked at the other office computers in the office. The DDA Director's laptop is, I think, probably overdue for replacement. It's still running Windows 7. It's a really old piece of hardware. Treasurer's desktop also is due for replacement. We did request quotes for both of those computers. I believe that the DDA Director's one would probably come out of the DDA budget and the treasurer's out of our budget. All of the other office computers were okay. Moving on to the software review, we took a look at all that and they are proposing or recommending that we should take a look into moving into Office 365. There's a lot of good reasons for doing that, including the fact that it automatically will have all of your latest versions of the office applications, you'll get automatic updates for those. It'll also include Outlook and Teams, which are useful because that, the Outlook will be used for email now if we did that. And Teams is a really good collaboration tool, especially for Google. And it includes SharePoint storage in the cloud. So IT Right's going to be analyzing our storage needs because it's sized based upon how much storage and resources you need for it and they're going to be preparing a proposal for us once they analyze our storage needs. We also discussed the wireless internet at the town hall and we are looking to move forward with implementing that because we already have a hardware phone, we leave our DPW crew or can handle the wiring that they're moving this building, so we're going to start moving forward with that project right here. And that's pretty much it for now. You'll see all the details in the IT minutes soon through the time we're over.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does our DPW, do they have a computer set up for them or have access to one? So if Bob wants to do quotes or whatever, respond to emails, do they have anything?
As far as I know, they do not, no.
Is that something we should consider?
If we were to consider something like that, I would probably suggest that we maybe just get a tablet from Bob. Because he should, if we go to Office 365 and bother looking at all the resources and things through a tablet, that would probably be more costly.
Well, that's something you can, you know, discuss with him, but I'm just thinking when he's getting bids on items, you know, he could be looking out, you know, whatever he needs to for resources and.
No, that's a good point. We'll have to make note of that. Make a note of that.
Well, I'm just thinking, obviously, he does rely heavily on his phone as he's out and about, but having access to the billing inspector's laptop is definitely an option and I know he utilizes.
Yeah, he can use that.
You guys quite often for something.
But if he has a tablet, he can take that around.
Right. But I think it is, you know, is easier just to use the phone versus the phone that's at the back of Bob, but you definitely have resources for him.
I try to look stuff on my phone.
I know, right. It's like a bigger, little bit bigger screen.
I do too.
Yeah, I think the tablet will give a little bit of better visibility to your stuff.
Have you ever done cold patch with a tablet in your pocket?
That's what I'm thinking. Have you seen his phone anyway? It's huge. But yes, I know having the two phones is already, let's say, but yes, good, definitely.
We'll look him up.
It might, might be good to have the email more accessible to him.
I'm looking forward to getting a little bit of that connectivity direct, if they access point directly in the field. I think that's going to be further.
Definitely a long time coming. We appreciate it. All right, how about Historical Society Committee updates, please?
Just a couple of quick things there would be, I think the big thing is on the upcoming September Fest, the Blacksmith Shop will officially open and have a demonstration going during the September Fest for that. I see on the agenda, we do have, we're painting the old mill, we better, we'll discuss the bid there, we've seen. And I will take care of that. From a senior center, I would like to conclude that. No bingo on Fridays anymore. Too big of a crowd under the circumstances if you know.
That's right. I don't say no, but.
The ones that, the ones that act normally are still on.
And I heard it was starting to draw on the younger crowd too. They were getting desperate with nothing open.
Bingo.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, how about the Heritage Charity Committee, please?
There is nothing new to report.
Thank you very much. Next up is the DDA update. They continue to work on their priority projects as the year is more than half over. Really focusing on finishing up those tasks that have been researched and it's pretty exciting. A lot of them tie into projects and committees, obviously working with planning and council as well. So that's nice to continue to see the unified work together. Supporting the Brandon Rec with September Fest plans, trying to find ways to work with them on that as well. There will not be a farmer's market the day of September Fest, obviously there's a lot going on already, so we'll give them their turn. The farmer's market does continue to be a success. Remember to come down on Saturdays, 9 to 2. You come on Saturday, after 9:15, you don't get the can that you want. Just saying. And the two newest board members have jumped right in and so we thank you for supporting them and continuing to, you know, assist them in anything they need. They're doing great, they're outstanding. So that is it for the DDA. And the last committee update for this evening is the Brandon Fire Department Authority. Was that you or me?
We'll talk about them more under new business, but the fire authority met two weeks ago now and that's why you'll see the minutes approved from January was the last time the authority had met. But we talked about budgeting, capital improvements and some upcoming needs with the Brandon Fire Department. Is that, no case summary?
Yes. So as usual, any questions on any of those? Please, you know, research your minutes and see if there's anything you have or highlights or things to share. All right, been very, very busy. Item number 10, we will work on our unfinished business and item A will be the village manager's 90-day review and the scheduling of that.
So in your packet, you will see the village manager performance evaluation. This one has been used in the past. The, I don't have, I didn't write a memo for this because I feel like I shouldn't write one about myself, but it would be my recommendation that, and the Personnel Committee, we've met and talked about this as well, but that we proceed using this evaluation tool that's in your packet. We have village council complete this as well as other, other parties. So we had talked about, I don't know that we finalize, so if you guys can help me or if, it's open to discussion, but people like the Planning Commission, the DDA, DDA Director, things like that. If you want other people to also evaluate the village manager, I'm, I'm open to that conversation. But that we proceed with this and that we get these submitted by September 2 is what we had talked about. That's, that gives you about two weeks to get it turned in. Because there's a paper copy in your packet, you can do it after the meeting if you want and just hand it directly to Jenna or to myself. I would recommend that you turn it in. It's either Jenna or the Personnel Committee. Let's take me out of the equation.
It normally goes to Personnel.
Thanks. Yeah, Personnel.
Yes. If you want to take a paper copy to the office room, you're welcome to put it in the sealed envelope and send it in. But it does go to Personnel and then we make three copies and we kind of summarize what everything is. It'll be available at the council meeting and so then we'll get a chance to ask any questions and things and.
Did Personnel get, I had sent a suggestion of sending this to you and I never, I've sent a couple of things to Personnel, I never hear back from anybody, so I have no idea if you guys get these emails, but if you can just say you received or something. Because I never know.
So say we get them, but obviously we haven't had a meeting to talk. Decide that's something that will, you know, add or not, but definitely.
But I have suggested that, that perhaps Glover and Quapis, those that, the DDA Director, those that Ryan works with here in the village, perhaps could also do this.
And I know like Ryan mentioned, we did talk about that at our last Personnel meeting and then, you know, asked you guys what you think and now like I said, we haven't had a chance to meet and, you know, finalize. Obviously, I will get it, but we appreciate that, you know, yes, we agree, but yes, you guys support it. Ryan is definitely on board, so I think that that's a nice little change that we'll do, so.
And I know with the previous village manager, we also gave the same survey to both staff and vapor.
Well, yeah, and that's, I assume that was in part of this. So can you just confirm then who will be doing this? Village council, village staff and who else?
When we meet, we'll be able to have information. We haven't met to agree upon that. We, we came up with the thought process, is this something we'd like to do? We brought it to you guys.
And kind of capture.
But we don't know who is interested in, you know, I mean, is police and fire interested? I don't know, you know, we haven't got that far, but yes, we can see.
We could probably have a consensus as a council on who we think should.
We didn't want to ask, absolutely.
Should we hear that?
I have a comment. A couple of comments. About it, all of it.
Let's, hold on real quick, let's finish that one. Is that something that you would like to give suggestions to, which I know Mally was able to do that too, but is that anything to give suggestions as to who they would like to see receive it? And then we'll be able to add those. I guess I don't want to speak for people who are receiving it to say who will be doing them is a lot different than who we would like to receive it. We can't say who will do them. That is where my comment came in. Looking for a.
Trustee Karine has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm writing down the ones that Mally answered. Go ahead.
I guess when I first heard that, it was taken aback somewhat because, you know, if you're a manager somewhere, you don't ask everybody in the building, what do you think about this person? What is your thought on how they're doing? Not that we can't do it to just get information, but they by no means would, I wouldn't think, would have a lot of say and we hired Ryan, the village council hired him. So we're the ones who need to make sure he's doing what he's doing correctly. Again, if you want to include others, I mean, it's certainly okay, but I just don't think, they're not part of the hiring process, they're not part of the village council.
I wouldn't necessarily ask all these questions.
Well, it might be a different one than what we would ask if they wanted to fill it out and like you say, they don't have to.
Right.
But as far, and what we look at, you know, we're kind of tasked with the, the thing of, you know, seeing what he is doing, is he doing it correctly? Is he doing it the way that we want it done? You know, is he moving forward? At least that's my thought process on that. And the other, I have no problem giving Ryan my final copy. I believe he needs to see what everybody thinks. If, and if you're, you know, if you don't want him to know, you know, that's not really a rating, you know, or an evaluation because that person has to know what, you know, what I think and maybe what you're thinking are different things. And to me, that's, I mean, that's how I've, I've always done ratings, you give it to the person, you sit down and talk with the person and discuss it with the person.
So would these not be given to him?
Not, we have, historically, they have never been given the individual one. It's a compilation of the total numbers.
They keep all the input from the people.
Is there a reason for that?
We have had very many reservations from staff sharing information, not feeling comfortable being honest. They're the ones that work with them every day. So if there's going to be any concerns and their names on it and, oh, you know, I have a whole list of concerns, or is it, you know, hey, there's a whole list of concerns and here's your page, doesn't matter if it's coming from council or staff, this, this is our concern. Or obviously, this is what we love about you, Ryan, not all concerns, but, so, you know, I think for the privacy and respect on both sides, it can be uncomfortable. Would you like to give them a copy of yours? I think there's nothing wrong with anybody saying, I'd really like to give you a copy, but, I mean, we've had staff refuse to complete it because they don't want to say the truth. We don't want that position. You know, we've had staff talk to their lawyers before they turn them in and we don't want that. We want everybody to be able to turn it in, blend it together and say, you know, here's a one, here's a 10, you know, here's your averages.
Yeah, here's the averages evolving.
And that's what you get.
But here's a summary of the various comments. No, making it specific to anyone first.
Well, when that's happening, then you definitely know there's bigger issues going on that need to be corrected.
And you can't correct them until you have documentation in front of, you know, to use that. So we, we'd like people to respond to make sure that they're comfortable doing that in an open platform. We surely don't want to put any of us on the spot.
I would like to respond to what Kay mentioned. It is true that the village council hires the manager and is responsible for the manager position. However, I think village council, since we only meet once a month or twice a month sometimes, we really are not in a good position to really observe the day-to-day operation of the village manager. And that's where it's important to get feedback from other people, such as the staff and other entities that have worked with them, so that we can get a more balanced picture of exactly how he's performing. So I also know it's not uncommon in many companies to do what's called like 360 review where, you know, a manager position does get feedback from the people that he's managing in order to get a, their perspective on how he's doing his management, not just a perspective of people who are over that person's position. So, you know, having both sides of that in the input really does help to give a more complete rounded picture of the overall performance. So, and I think that when we put it out there, it's, we just make it clear, say, hey, only answer the sections where you, that you feel are relevant, you know, you don't have to answer everything, just answer the sections where you feel it's relevant. And that's pretty much what we've done, you know. So if a certain section doesn't pertain to your interaction with him, you just don't throw it out.
So the September 2 is the deadline to have these in and then when will you be meeting with Ryan?
Well, we have to meet and compile everything, go over everything and look at the scoring and then meet with Ryan and then everything will be ready for the council. So that's why we need a second.
So let's set that date then.
Why wouldn't we, as a council, meet before you met with Ryan?
We can, it's, all it's going to be is the total compilation of what it is, it's going to be.
I know, but because.
We can meet.
I would like, I would like to meet before we meet, I mean, he can be there, I, you know, I'm just saying. We should know ahead of time what's being said and what will be said at the meeting with Ryan.
Whatever we choose to do.
You know, I, the only thing about that is, since our next meeting is in September, towards the end of September, I think that there were some things contingent on Ryan's 90-day evaluation and if we decide to make any adjustments to compensation or anything like that, as part of this hiring agreement, I think it would be better to try to get that, those recommendations finalized before. And so if, if. And so if, if personnel could meet before that meeting, now it doesn't mean that we don't get village input, but we, we could do is do something like, we have September 2nd is when all the data comes in. We collect it, we compile it, we can share that out to the council at that time, we can get councils depending on that, then we can have a meeting with Ryan and then we could, personnel committee could then have a recommendation to bring to the next council meeting. So that, I think we can work out a process where we can have something that we can, if necessary, take action out of that or next.
Or I could always, you know, if, if something is done, in regard to pay, it can be retroactive too.
Yeah, it can be retroactive too, but I, I hate to leave somebody dangling out for months at a time.
Well, I'm not saying months, Larry. I'm not, I don't think it would take months to do what we need to do.
Well, it's already past his 90 days.
Yes.
This, this review is actually a little.
Yes, it is.
So I don't want to get too far off track, let's go back to who we would like to see do the evaluation. The evaluation itself usually consists of council and the staff in which he manages. Would we like to go outside of that with police, fire, township? Or are we comfortable with, in the building with the staff that he manages and council outside of that? Which way would we like to go? That's kind of the first thing we were discussing and we don't kind of decide yet.
So we make a motion?
If you want.
No, no.
I personally, I, I would like it to just be within the DPW, us and staff, because there's questions on there that I can't even answer because I'm not with Ryan.
All of us are.
Or he has not had an opportunity to do it.
Just saying, that same thing with, let's say, use Glover, Quapis, they're, they're not with Ryan every single day, you know, it's, and they've got other things that they have to worry about and, you know, do we, does council get anything when they're being evaluated? You know, Glover and Quapis, do they, do we have anything that we have to fill out? So it's really, I would see where, why we would put Ryan in that situation.
I can go.
And, I mean, if we can, well, let me ask you this, Ryan, do you deal a lot with supervisor role?
Some.
Would it be about the same amount?
As chief Quapis and lieutenant Glover? Yeah.
So there again, you know, it's.
We're, we're working on some.
Part-time dealings, I don't think is, I think it's more important for staff and DPW and us to deal with that.
I, I think we should include all three of our village entities, the DDA and the planning commission as well.
The DDA is one of the umbrellas under the village though.
Yeah.
It's not really.
But it's a different group of people that, that Ryan works with. And same thing with planning commission. We aren't.
The thing is, he works with them every day and now to ask this guy that you're friends with, you know, that's uncomfortable for, I would think that would be uncomfortable for me. That this person now is going to get to tell what they think about me really, you know, I, I, I don't know. That's.
I, I just, I, I think it should just stay with what I suggested.
Was that a motion?
Do you want me to?
You said, can I make a motion? I haven't heard one yet. I did, did you not want to or did you want to?
Um, I mean, I can, but the song is going to get voted down.
No, it's up to you. I just heard, I would like to make one, so I just want to be sure that we're still in dialogue. All right. Anybody else have ideas?
Can I, can I comment?
No.
To be sure, I would push back on that and say, the planning commission I work with in a similar way to the village council and they are definitely part of our municipal corporation. The DDA is a separate entity, but they are one of the several boards that I'm a part of in one way or another. And I think their input would be very valuable in the, how I work with the community aspects of the evaluation. So I would like to see those two bodies also included with staff and village council is, is my, my two cents.
I, I agree with that.
My only, only statement I have on that would be if only, well, like Melanie's on the planning commission, she either evaluates as a council person or.
Counsel.
As counsel.
Yeah, I'm just.
So I would do one for DDA, she would do one for planning. It trumps, council trumps. Cause you're appointed from council to that.
Yeah, so there will be one.
It's one, she doesn't submit two because she's not two boards. She submits one because she's one individual. She happens to have more diverse international trying because of the, but it's still just one evaluation.
Yeah. If she has something, she can answer the question, I, I don't care how she.
Yeah, she might be able to answer more questions than some of us.
I just want to make sure there's not two from Tanya, two from.
No, no, just one.
I was just going to submit five. No, good point.
I would vote for one from the township, like from supervisor. I wouldn't go any further than that outside of what we're comfortable with.
Can I just ask a reasoning? Why him and not police or fire? I was just curious.
Um, back to the earlier points of burdening them with, with additional paperwork that again, we do a lot of, we're, the village and the township are very intertwined, so I guess I, I would kind of want to know to make sure that he's working well with the township, because again, I'm not here every day, I have no idea. But as far as the, the fire and the police, I don't really see that as, as a huge interaction. They are just, it's just different, I guess.
Well, and I tend to agree with you because it is township, village, and then we umbrella over police and fire. So that's why I was just curious what, what your thought was. I, I agree the same way. I think township is different than police and fire.
It's totally different and, and Ryan did say that he interacted with the township about as much as he did with the police and fire, so.
So.
Sorry, I'm just thinking we don't need the township's input.
You're voting for no township input?
Right.
Pat, what do you think?
Oh, I think from a, where Kaydor is has said and Tony is saying is, is finance the ultimate vote, but I would think as, as village council member, I would be very interested as voting council member on Ryan's assessment. I would be very interested in what chief Quapis says and, and lieutenant Glover and, and what the township says and DDA says. I would be very interested. I would welcome their input as a council member when we make our decisions, because we're, we don't want, so all the more information we get, we say, in my world, this, I, this is what I think of Ryan's doing, but it would be nice to see what other people say. And I, just from, in this case, for example, Ryan's in a good position here. Previous managers, white nuts, white nut, fair so well, and they, that kind of information flowing up, like we don't see him, we don't know who he is, he's hard to work with. But I would think as, as a village council, I would welcome getting as much input as we can from DDA, the planning commission. And this, just, and it's not this detailed little thing.
Right.
It's just a general assessment, what do you think?
Yeah, and they were.
And then we use that as a council member to, to, to help, it's what our decision on Ryan, because right now I'm making it strictly on one of Pat George's, then I don't, I don't, I could ask Kay what she's got for her answer.
I can show. No, she.
But anyway, that's why I think it would be my, my take on it. I would, I, as a council member, would like as much input as we've got from the various other people that Ryan interacts with. And that's part of our assessment.
Yes, and that's exactly why I suggested that, because I know the last manager, perhaps had we known a little bit more, maybe that could have been changed sooner rather than later. Yeah.
As long as it's not an evaluation. You know, if, as long as it's not an evaluation.
No. This is, but we've run out of time to change this, so it could be as simple as we're, we're giving him an evaluation, how is your working relationship with him?
Exactly.
You know, what, could he work on or what is he good at? That's simple.
Right.
So it's more of a question.
It's more of a question, not, but we don't have time right now because we've run out of time because.
Well, and not all areas that are applicable to each person, you're only going to fill out your section and that's easy to do.
And keep in mind that all of this input will be sealed and it will go only to the personnel and we will anonymize the output and just respond to the averages and summaries of the, you know, general summaries of the comments. We're not going to give anything that can identify who said what or where.
Unless you use your name as a third person. Larry and Ryan don't get along.
We will even anonymize those comments.
As far as the form goes, I, I really truly think it's as simple as stating that when you send it out to a, a, a third-party entity or whoever, simply say, you know, whatever sections don't apply, do you please just write NIA? I, I think it's that simple.
Just comments, yep.
Just comments.
Cause I know you're working, you worked with lieutenant Glover with the Blight, they'll be working with Jason Moore on the sewer issue if, you know, if that gets going and you're on boards with fire and.
Email Jason Rummel.
Rumble.
Rummel.
You said more, Jason Moore.
Jason, working with Jason.
More. Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm really.
Jason's animal. Situation is killer.
So we have heard quite across the gamut. We are totally different places, so.
I'm going to take a stab at this and make a motion that we distribute the village manager evaluation to village staff, village council, planning commission, DDA, and in addition to the government entities above, send it to the fire chief, lieutenant Glover and township supervisor.
Support.
If they're included in staff.
Well, they're staff, they come in next to us. Where did you, just the fire chief, police and.
Lieutenant Glover.
And township supervisor.
Yep.
And DDA and planning?
DDA and planning, yes.
Staff and council.
Staff and council, yes.
I support that.
Seven different, right, you said seven?
Yes. I think I heard, who supported that?
Oh, that was Melanie.
Question, how do we know when we get them back? You're going to all lump them together, so we're not going to know, oh, this is what lieutenant Glover said, this is what the township supervisor said, oh, and the village council didn't have much of a say because maybe we didn't put, maybe we put something less, maybe we put something more. You're just putting them all together then and that's not what I wanted. I wanted something that is just a little questionnaire for them.
Well, if you want council separate, you can request to personnel that council has their own scoring separate from everybody else, but what we do is the total number, like say for one question, seven people answered, for another question, only one person answered. It's going to say total number of responses, one, and the score, total number of responses, seven, the score.
I think it should be separate, I really do.
Cause not everybody's going to answer area.
Um, we could, we could probably split that in the results.
So do you want staff and council separate or just council separate?
Do we get a second?
Yeah, we can.
Has there been a second to Larry's motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're in discussion, good.
What was your question?
Staff and council separate or just council separate from everybody?
So if you want to.
What would you like to see?
Staff and council, because I believe they do have, you know, they work with them every day, I believe that's important.
Does that include planning and DDA because they're under.
Would you like to make an amendment to my motion then to add that stipulation?
Then I will make, I would like to make a motion to amend Larry's, whatever it is. Oh, my gosh.
Would you mind reading your question first?
To distribute the village manager evaluation to village staff, village council, planning commission and DDA and intervention to the government entity bug, send it to the fire chief, lieutenant Glover and the township supervisor.
All right, then I would like to make a, an amendment to your motion for the evaluations to be the village council and staff counted in one section and everybody else counted in another section.
Do we have a support?
So you want planning commission separate?
Well, we have a motion on the table right now, we need a support before we discuss because I, yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
That's, that's two amendment motion. They need support.
Go ahead, let's go ahead. All right, so at this time, we will withdraw the emotion, the motion, we do not have support for that currently. We did have a couple of questions.
So you didn't want planning commission to be part of council and staff?
No, I did, I said council and staff and the first ones we mentioned, that we said.
I did not hear planning commission as part of that motion.
Yes, yes.
No, all she said was council.
I did.
That's what I thought.
You know, you're right.
So that was my question, would that include planning and DDA?
It included planning.
Planning and DDA, township and chief and everyone separate.
Would be a, just a questionnaire or however.
Well, why not DDA? Because he is basically almost right, he are Matt's supervisor in this game of things. That's why I'm wondering why we're taking DDA.
There's three people separate.
The rest of them are all village staff and employees in our building and then the three are separate. That's why I'm wondering.
I, I, I can say that, you know, I do a lot of in the house assigned things, people on the planning commission know that, when we got survey results back, I did a lot of looking at it and analyzing and I found some interesting trends related to how responses were between upper income people versus lower income and things like that. I can say this, if you, I would do the same thing when we're looking at these results is check and see, is there anything that looks significantly different in the results from one body or that would be notable that we should mention? And if we did find anything notable like that, we certainly would include that and the report back in the council. But if the responses are pretty much were consistent between all the bodies, then I don't see that we would necessarily need to separate out the different responses. But we certainly would take a look at that and analyzing and looking through the results to see if there was any difference in based upon where the respondents were coming from.
I hear you. I just, I don't absolutely agree with it because we are the hiring body. We are, you know, giving up all of our rights and let everybody else tell us how we should run the village.
So there's a specific.
That's how it feels.
No, no, it's, it's an evaluation.
I know it's an evaluation.
No matter what he scores on this, we all still determine what happens with that.
And don't forget, there is a specific section that is for council. So we are going to be the only ones answering that section, the only ones who know the evaluation of how we feel about Ryan, because that is our section, that's our glory. And then the staff has their section where we can answer that because we don't know the answer. So it, it already is kind of divided out to, you know, what, what he'll kind of get back from that.
I, I would suggest that, that we lump it all together as in one and, and we, because we've never really done this, this officially at any capacity, so I guess I would vote that we would lump it all into one and then evaluate that and how did that turn out and does, does it show accurately, you know, that type, and we like it, how it worked out? Because we're going to be doing this, you know, at least once a year, if not multiple times a year, moving forward.
We used to do it all, every year.
Understood. It hasn't happened for a long time. So we're, we're re-implementing it. So I, I guess I would vote for leaving it lumped into one and then let's evaluate that evaluation process and then we can always change it moving forward.
Just to clarify, we have done this every year for every employee. We've done a 90-day and a six-month for the manager the past couple. So we've, we've been doing this on a consistent basis. What we would like to change and see it do, we would love that input after we finish its evaluation and then definitely address how, what the procedure might, should look like for future.
And I wanted to confirm, for, for DDA, it's, it's just to Matt, it's not to the whole, correct?
That's, I guess, to us, do we want to do director and president, just director?
Do, do, are you involved with both, both of them, the president and director?
Yes.
What would you do with the planning commission, would you only have the chairperson?
That begs the question.
Well, their board is 10 people?
Seven.
Seven, I thought it was at 10, didn't they just say?
For DDA?
Oh, DDA is more, sorry.
DDA, yeah. So, I just, is that what you're, do you wanna do, that whole group? I think planning commission is, we are part of the...
Well, let me ask a question, when we do like surveys...
I just wanted an answer, did we wanna do all 12, DDA, if we do, or don't? Yes or no?
And again, I go back to, Matt is somewhat of an employee, Courtney is not, do we, you know, there's a difference between us two.
No, but Melanie, I would, I would say, from a planning commission standpoint, again, who's over the planning commission though?
Bob.
So, it is Bob. So, Bob just says to, to the 11 other members on the planning commission, we're gonna give some input to the village council regarding the village manager Ryan's assessment. And please just, you know, here's, pass out a sheet, just comment on it, or whatever, and get it to me, Bob, and then Bob is the one that ultimately gives us the summary. Now, that's all. And you, you as an individual have a say, but it's ultimately by the alternative, same thing with, with lieutenant Glover and chief Quappus.
And don't forget, they're working at other facilities.
I just was confirming, that's what, is that how you're looking to do this?
In, in the motion, I said planning commission, DDA, and I did not specify only one or two people on those boards, I specified planning commission, which is...
Right, so that's what I'm asking. Right, that's, right, we know that, so.
So, I think it should go to all the individuals, just like when, when we send out surveys for Wayfounding or Heritage Park Garden, or whatever, we send it to everybody on those bodies to get their input. And I think this is a similar type of inquiry, we're sending it to the bodies to get their input. Now, there might be individuals who don't have much dealings with Ryan, in which case we say, hey, if I don't feel you have any input, just, you don't have to return it.
And as Ryan mentioned, he doesn't just deal with, say, planning commissioner or DDA board member in that one instance. We have so many subcommittees that he's dealing personally with, you know, a couple of people that are totally separate, so I think they have a good handle on Ryan, and they deal with him often.
I think so, too. I think, and if, we could keep this simple, we could keep it, it's just, it's the village, the council members' assessment of Ryan, but if that was the case, if I was Ryan, I would wanna know, I'd, informally, whatever, right, that's all, I just wanna, and I might think, for example, on the DDA, Ryan, for example, if you would be highly rated by the DDA, I might give surprise answers, who's Ryan? That would be, I think, very, very, I think, we followed the present circumstance. But that's all, all I want as a council member, I'd like to know, that, informally, what, I don't, I wanna see the paper from chief Quappus that has three lines on it, for example, that's all, and I'm just gonna skim that, period. I don't wanna make a big deal out of it.
To that point, I think...
And we ultimately, as a council, still make the final call, it would just help.
Yeah. To, to that end, I think it's safe to say that this evaluation tool doesn't cover everything we would like it to cover.
Correct.
So, could I ask, you know, in the future, let's put it on the personnel committee pile of things to work on, because I think it's something that does need to be tweaked.
I thought they were, I thought you guys were.
We haven't asked for input yet, we would like to get through this evaluation before Ryan knows the annual ones.
We sent, we sent a missing one now, then review it and redo it for...
Yeah, I thought that was at the top, okay, all right.
All right, so, we have a motion on the table by trustee Hayden, supported by trustee Nyveld, would you mind reading it one more time?
To distribute the village manager evaluation to the village staff, village council, planning commission, and DDA, in addition to the government entities above, send it to the fire chief, lieutenant Glover, and the township supervisor.
Does anybody have any questions on the motion?
By when?
September 2nd.
Do we need that in the motion?
Yeah, we should.
Good call. Ron and Larry, would you like to add that to your motion?
Yes, I will amend my motion to add due date for responses is September 2nd.
And, do we wanna put in that his evaluation will be completed by end of month?
Of September. Right now, this motion was just to collect the input.
Who is going to be?
When, who we're gonna send it to, so that's the only thing that I wanted to define, is who are...
Okay, that, so it means no, okay.
So, yeah.
All right, so, the motion now includes the due date of September 2nd, does anybody else have any questions on the motion?
Does, does the same motion and support exist with the change to the...
Do you support my amended motion?
Well, you don't have to amend it.
Amendment, I just wanna make sure, okay.
The amendment didn't go through.
Well, yeah, but I mean, my, my, I just amended...
Adding the due date.
Yes, I do, support.
All right, are we ready for vote?
Yes.
Okay, Jenna, please.
Randazzo?
Nope.
Dyless?
Yes.
George?
Did you support this, Melanie?
I did.
This is a point of clarification.
I did.
Not that I'm working for her. It's a point of clarification. Yes.
You gotta do what you gotta do.
The motion by trustee Hayden, supported by trustee Nyveld.
Green?
No.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nyveld?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes. Clarification, is that 5-2?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries 5-2, thank you very much. Next up, item number 11 is our new business, and the first is the old mill paid bids, and we will send it over to manager of the house.
So, in your packet, you will find information received from our friend Antonio. I say our friend, because he is a, a long-term work associate of Bob Huxwell, our DPW supervisor. Bob's worked with Antonio in the past, and speaks highly of his work. I apologize for the, the quote being pretty insufficient, as far as detail and more information about Antonio. The nuts and bolts there are accurate, though, so he walked the old mill with Bob a couple of weeks ago, took a look at what needs to be done, and submitted his bid to complete this project totaling $33,000. So, I recommend that the village council accept the quote from Antonio for $33,000. Further, I will follow up with him and get more details, and verify his, his bona fides to make sure he's licensed, insured, all the, he checks all those boxes before we just cut him a blank check.
Does he have a company name?
He does.
Or a last name?
He does, so, the information was received from Bob, so talk about technology and having access to it. Our village clerk copied it from Bob's phone, where they had been texting back and forth with information. So, that's where we gleaned our information, they talked back and forth several times, I promise it's legit.
Yeah, has he given an estimate of how long it would take him to do it once approved?
That's one of the things I would like to iron out.
And when he can start?
Well, yeah, because that would determine whether we want him or not, if he can't do it for six years.
No, it, it is, it's a this-year project.
Can you go by September 5th? That's when they won.
Really?
That was the original.
You're right, you're right.
That was the original goal.
Well, seeing that we couldn't even get any bids, it is August, I'm excited.
I'll ask the question. So, um, so, Bob has walked the property several times, and looked at the building with other contractors, and they've either been uninterested, too busy, or have quoted a price that's significantly greater than $33,000.
And I love that he does have a history, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I, I know we've had quotes from people he's not comfortable with at all, and he was not impressed with, with their interactions, so that makes me very comfortable with that.
Did Bob have any referrals, that this, you know, something this gentleman's company has done?
Yes, he's done historic paintings, at least one in Oxford, and I can't, the name escapes me. But I've, talking to Bob, there, he's, he's done several that are verifiable.
You read my mind, I was just thinking it could be...
Yep, good question.
Some other references besides just, just Bob. Not that I don't trust Bob, I, I trust Bob implicitly, but it's always good to have.
Something we could look at and see, oh, yeah, you know, they did that two years ago, and it still looks really good, or whatever.
Right, but the paint is not chipping away.
Right.
And, 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 on this time of night, originally, what do we have, 27,000 in budget, depending on the mill?
32.
This year was 32.
But it was 32, sure?
This year.
Okay, that's fine.
Just 1,000 more.
That's fine.
And we bumped it up.
Good.
But keep in mind, the 27 and the 32 completed included both buildings and the work needed on the schoolhouse as well.
Oh, it did?
25 was the painting, and 2,000 was the work on the schoolhouse. So, we're still gonna be a little off of what we need, what we budgeted, and what will be in the end.
We are, but we're way closer than...
We, yeah, we have some, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yep. And, to your point, Pat, in the future, I would like to budget, as we implement a capital improvements plan, that we budget some money each year towards upkeep, rather than every couple of years, we say, oh my gosh, the paint is chipping, that every year we maintain the, our historical assets along the way.
Absolutely, like on a calendar.
Imagine that.
Like in a capital improvements plan?
That's what we just said, Larry.
I'm okay with it.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the painting of the Ortonville Historic Center for $33,000, dependent on reference checks done by village manager Mares.
Trustee George, support.
All right, we have a motion on the table by trustee Nyveld, supported by trustee George, we might have had a little discussion prior to. Any questions on the motion, or any other input? All right, Jenna, please.
Dyless?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nyveld?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes. Thank you, that motion carries 7-0, I know Bob will be super excited, he's very worried about that beautiful building.
As for any miracle in historical history, yeah.
Yes, I'd, good point, them as well. All right, thank you very much, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Next up is B, which is our DPW and DDA storage shed, another long-time project.
Yes, so, in your packet, you'll see the memo about this. In 2017, it wa, the storage capacity was reviewed between the DPW and the DDA. Storage space is a, is definitely an interest, we know there's lots of DDA items that are stored throughout the village, that we would like to move to a spot that we don't rent, or have to look at during public meetings. So, in 2016, a contract for the project was submitted to the village, calling for a 30-by-20 shed with a metal roof added onto, to the north side of the salt storage building there at the Ted Baker DPW garage area. At the time, the cost was $5,350, as we know, costs continue to rise. So, this project isn't something we need to vote on at this time, but I would like to solicit bids and work to gain an understanding of the total cost of the project, utilizing the money that the DDA has from the Restaurant Relief Program, that I didn't hit on that in my preamble, but we can discuss. But utilizing that, that funding, and the additional village funds to complete as much of this project as possible during this calendar year.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yes.
Just looking for a, right, I'm gonna move on that.
Why isn't that done?
Yes, Brian.
Okay, great, perfect, wasn't sure if we needed votes or anything, just, okay.
Don't hurry, it's been a couple of years.
Yeah, no rush.
Thank you, we appreciate it, go.
And, and Ryan, just for...
End of September.
Is this, is this a new structure, or add-on?
Add-on, yep. And that, that $5,000 figure from the DDA is part of the Restaurant Relief Grant, they were given lots of equipment and things, so the idea is to store those as well as their other assets there, and DPW will have some more room to store things as well, it'll be good.
Any other literature, did you mention a timeline, on when, when we have to, was it by December, or something?
Um, the Restaurant Relief Program, we have to commit the funds by the end of September, is open county's budget year. We've already talked to them about the shed as an approved use of those funds, so as long as we're making progress on that, we'll be able to use those funds still. But, the sooner the better.
So, you're gonna send our PPA to get bids?
Um, yes, I've got a couple contractors in mind that I'll talk to about bids, and what that might look like, and we'll go from there. I'll work with Bob, and we'll make sure that we're above board, and all those fun things, and make sure...
So, you're saying, we will not formally vote on this until, hopefully, September?
The goal is at the September 27th meeting, we have an action item to approve this one contract for whatever, and do it, yep.
Okay.
And that'll make the September 30 deadline.
That's right.
Once we, once we approve a bid, then we can commit the funds.
Yep.
All right, sounds great.
Thank you very much. Item C for new business is the Brandon Fire Department's special joint meeting, and I will send it over to manager Mares.
So, you all received via email, I believe, I sent it to you from chief Quappus, a doodle poll to find the best time for a special joint meeting between the Brandon Fire Department, fire authority, the village council, and the Brandon Township Board of Trustees. The, based on the results of that poll, the best time for that joint special meeting will be Tuesday, August 31st, at 6:30 PM, next Tuesday, August 31st, a week from tomorrow in this building.
Tuesday? You said 6:30?
Next Tuesday, 6:30, that is correct.
Not Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday at 6:30.
The very best day of the month.
Excellent.
And to schedule a special joint meeting, we need a, we need council action, is that correct?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the joint fire board meeting with the township and the village on August 31st at 6:30 PM in the Old Don Hall.
Support.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Green, supported by trustee Nyveld, for the August 31st joint meeting. Any questions? All right, Jenna, please.
George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nyveld?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Dyless?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes. Thank you, that motion carries 7-0. Just keep in mind that we will receive our packets, and questions would be sent to chief Quappus beforehand. Ryan is amazing, but I don't think he necessarily has their budget memorized yet.
When will we get a packet?
Um, I'm not sure that will be the first one, but they...
It'll get posted later this week.
I'll get the packet, and then, like I said, you can, you know, kind of go through the...
Time that is set.
There will be three separate...
6:30.
6:00.
Yep, so it'll be posted by all three entities, that's half of the fun of a joint meeting, so you'll see it from the village and village ways, you'll see it from the township and township places, you'll see it posted all over town, can't miss it, 6:30, August 31st.
And then, I'm sure, they'll let us know when the fire department has to deliver our budgets, packets.
You'll get them in the normal way from the clerk, yep.
I just have a quick comment, I'm gonna try to be here, but when I filled it out, that date was not available for me, because I'd be out of town, so...
That, yeah, that's the beauty of the doodle poll, is we could see it wasn't perfect, there were no perfect dates for everybody. Each entity has to have a quorum, so, you know, talk to us after, if...
So, only three of us can play hooky, then?
Yes, exactly.
I'm possibly one of them.
Okay, now two of us.
Collected.
All right, thank you very much, so...
One person gets sit with the last one.
We are all set there, we are moving on to item 12, which is the manager's report, and I will send that over to manager Mares.
All right, let's get moving. In your packet, you'll find the attorney invoice for July, it was more than the previous month. I do expect that we will see some steeper attorney invoices in the coming months, because of pending litigation scheduled for the end of September. Any questions on that item?
Yes, real quick.
Sure.
I know it keeps referencing marijuana caregiver lawsuit, but it really was not a caregiver lawsuit, it was for dispensaries, so I just wanna make sure that, I don't know
lawsuit, it was for dispensary, so I just wanna make sure that, I don't know when that name changed along the way.
I'll ask.
Yeah.
Originally it was worded as a caregiver?
No, it is now, but it was never a caregiver lawsuit. It was about having dispensaries in the village. So I don't. They're different. They are very different. I just wanna make sure we're just, it's just a verbal, you know, snafu and that it's totally something different that we don't know about.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good question.
Or maybe we get lucky and somebody else's bill and ours is only $3. No.
Any other questions? All right, in your packet you'll find information about the 2020 census. The information beginning to be reported, it's gonna be very useful information for the village. Does everybody have this one?
No, no.
I have my printed copy. I will resend it to you tomorrow. I can read it to you for now, it's pretty short. On August 12th, the Census Bureau released the redistricting data file, which contains the block level debt required for redistricting and is the first broad release of census 2020 results to the public. This data set provides several key pieces of information, including the total population by race and Hispanic origin, the voting age population by race and Hispanic origin, and the number of occupied households and vacant household units. The data is released for all geographic areas from census blocks and tracks to community, school districts, and counties. That's a direct quote from SEMCOG. SEMCOG, as our regional agency, they have several tools to understand and better study the census data, so I strongly recommend that you check out SEMCOG's website. I will send this to you with the link. And then census.gov is also very helpful to see all the census information. Among other information, this data shows that the village of Ortonville's reported population is as follows for the 2020 census. Total population is 1,376 residents, a decrease of 67 residents. There are 291 residents under the age of 17 and 1,085 18 and older. And also, there are 529 households averaging 2.55 people per household with 42 vacant There's much more information now and there's much more data coming out. This was just the tip of the iceberg, but those are definitely figures that have an impact on all kinds of things, especially related to redistricting and voting and funding and good stuff like that.
So we have, we have 500, what, 500 some households, but 42 vacancies under that.
That's correct, yep.
And was our ARP money done, so they used 2019, but was there much change from that to?
They used, I believe, the 2010 census data of, it was 1443 was our, our total population number on that, and that's where the change of 67 shows. That's correct. A lot of municipalities are seeing, they, people aren't sure if it's a decrease, if it's underreporting because the census was rushed and it was during COVID and things like that, so a lot of people aren't happy about the, the numbers they're seeing.
Yep, that can have a lot of issues with.
Impacts to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars over the next 10 years.
Yes, it can, yeah.
Any other questions? Check out the SEMCOG one, yeah, it's very good.
I like the SEMCOG one.
Can I pick it up in the office tomorrow? I guess, or emails?
Yes, good call. All right, next up, we're gonna talk about the DPW labor position. You will see in your packet the ad that you may have hopefully seen in The Citizen over the last few weeks. It'll run until the end of the month, as well as the information you can find if people are applying. We realized we haven't put that in a packet yet, so you haven't seen that yet. In a packet, we wanted to make sure it's there. There are several DPW things going on. They are a busy crew, right now a skeleton crew. So just so, just to talk about them, we've got a couple big paving projects and they are, there's some that we're gonna have to get outside help with because a two-man crew can't do them. And just off Crossman Park, so the end result of phase one of Crossman Park was that stretch of the township parking lot that's still gravelled, that's gonna get paved. And then, if you've gone down Schoolhouse Road at all lately, you'll see where Bob MacArthur's front yard is torn up because of a drainage issue there, so that's gonna get repaved here in the next, next few weeks. It's significantly cheaper to do those two jobs at the same time because it's one load of asphalt covers both. But again, we're gonna have to get some outside help with that. And then, not quite our DPW, but there are several road projects coming up. Keith and I were talking about, I'll send the Streets Committee a more formal update, but there is some roadwork on M15 coming up, starting next week, that'll run through the end of September, so when people ask about that, I was just notified of that project today.
Where is it at?
So from the corner here of 15 and Mill Street in Grange Hall, going 1,000 feet in either direction, up or down M15 to the north or south, MDOT is working on drainage. So the water essentially from the cemetery on down is gonna drain into the creek, into, into Narin Pond, do we call it? Over kind of on the west side of M15 there. But to get that water there, MDOT with engineering from Row, they are putting in storm drains all along M15. It's gonna have traffic down to one lane in each direction. For a day or two, the south end of Narin where it meets Mill Street is gonna be closed because they have to run culverts across and then repair them, so it's gonna be exciting for, between Monday and the end of September.
They're already excited about way down the road in Clarkston that's backing traffic up forever, so.
Same, same crew is doing it, so they're almost done there and they're coming here next. With that, where it relates to DPW is that MDOT is gonna be storing some of their equipment on our property at the north end of Narin, which we're happy to do because we've got space there and it was DPW supervisor Huxwell's idea, so it's a good thing.
Ryan, what date will you start?
Monday, the 30th.
I don't think it'll be as bad as when it was closed because of the bridge repair and then all the rest comes through the downtown. That was really interesting.
That's next summer. They're working on the creek in the township just south of A&amp;W next summer.
Do we have any interest in the DPW positions?
We've had a few, we've had, we have a little bit of interest. We've received applications from two individuals. We have it posted through the end of the month. We're beginning the process of contacting them and talking through the initial phases of that process.
Okay, and then I just had a question on the, the DPW labor sheet that you had.
All right, hold on a second before we backtrack off of the construction.
Yeah, which isn't actually an agenda item, but yeah.
Is, well, I know, but I don't wanna forget, is that already posted on our website and can I be?
It can be, sure.
And then our social media as well. I think that'd be something great to share with DDA and have them posted on their social media as well, seeing that that will affect the week.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So I didn't wanna lose that, but.
Yeah, that's a good, very good idea.
Good call.
Because I know the Sashba one starts too, and so you're coming from both sides of town, and I, and I know that's been well advertised, so I'd like to kinda keep up.
Zigzag.
Yeah, ours isn't a total closure like that one, but it is something to spread the word.
But, so, sorry, go ahead, Mel.
No, no, that's, that's a good call. Okay, so we had on there a physical exam, including drug tests, with physician to be designated by the village manager. I didn't know if personnel was going to look at that, I don't know if that's even possible, especially when, when it's on your, I don't know.
That's standard.
That's standard for all employers.
That the village manager designates what physician?
Yes, the village specifies.
Your plan kind of specifies what physician.
It's done by the clinic and the township, the police, they all do the same thing.
Okay, so there, no matter what insurance, it is covered for this?
I think then that would give Ryan the ability to have that conversation if there was a concern.
Okay, I just wanna make sure now with the different insurance plans, it's just.
And I can state like with Ryan, we did not ask him to drive down here for a 30-minute, you know, physical. We said, hey, we'd love you to come here, and he's like, mm, you know, am I really gonna drive that? Absolutely, let's talk about it.
Perfect, okay.
So that's something that can be changed, but technically, I mean, we use the same ones as township and the fire, that's, you know, just really kinda nice and easy to know what the standard is, but like you say, Ryan has the ability to.
Beautiful, okay, good, 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 thank you.
Good concern.
All right, next up in your packet, you'll find the posting for Fire Department, for the Brandon Fire Department. They are looking to hire an engineer paramedic. You can learn more in the packet. We can also quiz Chief Quappas about it next Tuesday at 6:30 PM during our special joint meeting. Questions there? It won't be on the agenda, but I'll be a member of the public and get asked. Questions on that? All right, next you'll see a fact sheet from the Michigan Municipal League about social districts. It's something we've talked about a little bit, it's one that DDA Director Jenkins and I have talked about a little bit, so I just wanted to, to make sure council's aware of some information, some of the pros, some of the cons, what that could look like in Ortonville. Social districts, if you're not aware, are popping up all over Michigan. Part of, you know, the, part of the, the last year and a half is we've realized that people would like to get together outdoors in safe places, and so municipalities are creating social districts where you can, you can, you can meet up outside, you can take alcoholic beverages from one establishment and walk down to a, within the district and move around, so you can learn more in your packet there.
Question for you, I'm reading over the information, it says that social area like that is where you have, it seems like you have to have at least two licensees in there. Do we have more than one licensee that sells beverage for, beverages, alcohol beverages for on-site consumption?
We currently have one.
Yeah, so I don't see where the social district could really.
Today, no, but a year from now, maybe. So that's why I just wanted you to have as much information as possible, so as the conversation happens or it doesn't, just so you're aware of, it's something happening that, it's happening around the state, and if it were to happen here, I would like for you to have as much information as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Last up is the Veterans Resource Fair, happening later this week. I just wanted you to make sure you got that information. It's an Oakland County-wide event, looks to be pretty big, I've seen a lot of buzz about it, so any questions, there's information on the flyer, and it's worth a look. Share the, share the news with any veterans you know.
Do you have to put this on the website too? Does this go on?
Yes, yeah. And that's it for manager's report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is item 13, which is our public comments, and at this time, this is non-agenda items only. If there's anything you would like to share with us, questions, comments, non-agenda items only, please let us know. You can stand with your hand, we have a three-minute rule, please. All right, very none. We have the items from the trustees, and we will start in reverse order with Tony, please.
Well, the August 14th movie that Parks and Rec ran, that was pretty fun. A little damp, but it turned out really good. And there was also a really awesome picture that was taken, it was also published in The Citizen on Saturday, so. Yeah, that's about it.
Thank you. Melanie, please.
I have no comments.
All right, backwards, we are on.
Oh, I'm on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're fine.
I, backwards, I can't do my mouth shut.
Sorry, they're both Jews. The only thing I wanted to mention was to Pat, when we're walking, we walk the Old Mill, and that railing is ready to go, I mean, I grabbed it the other day to walk down, and it is just wobbling, if you would please.
Let it wobble?
Yeah.
So that would be DPW and through Ryan?
I can do that because I've got a couple more across. Yeah, that's good.
That's all.
Did we skip you? See, I told you, I can't do my mouth shut backwards. You've never had to practice that. All right.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I think so. All right, so I'm sorry, we skipped over Larry, let's do that.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just wanna say I'm glad that the village itself at least didn't suffer, suffer too much damage from the storms. DPW crew is always a good chat. I hope that our residents did okay with the two days of power outage we had, that was quite challenging. I just kind of more positive looking forward, want to remind everybody about some upcoming events coming up next month. We have another food truck rally coming up on the 23rd, and September Fest, everybody try to come out and participate and see what's happening on September Fest and 25th. That should be a really good event, and be really good to see people coming back down to town for that this year after, after last year was so challenging. And that's it for me.
Thank you. I know you also mentioned CERT, has a place? They have openings for Dr. J?
Yes, yes, we also, our CERT team does support the September Fest and all these events as best we can, but we're really short on members, we just have another member leaving because he's moving out of state, so anybody looking for ways to help give back to the community and those within Brandon Township, we'd be more than happy to have you join our team. For more information, you can check our CERT website, or we have a Facebook page too, and you can also ask the Fire Department for any time you see us.
Are you looking for men and women?
Anybody.
Anybody, okay.
Anybody, yeah.
Okay, just two.
18 and above, yes. We also, with CERT team, speaking of CERT, we will be having a booth at the, one of the upcoming Marketplace events. It will be, actually, we chose to have a booth there for doing the frequent purposes on September 11th. We thought that would be a good day because it kind of brings everybody's thoughts back around to the value of our first responders and how much they provide and give to our community and their lives who always have a risk. And our CERT team is there to support them, so that's where it would be a good place for people if you are interested. Look for our booth at the Marketplace on September 11th.
Okay, I like it. Thank you. How about Pat?
Just, I'm real pleased, I think this is another successful.
How about Pete?
Okay, mine's not gonna be quite that short. I guess number one is I'd like to, I guess, give a official shout-out to DTE and their quick response on getting the power back up. I thought they did a fantastic job. I wasn't quite sure they could do what they did with sistering the poles along M15 there, but they did a fantastic job. Kudos to them. I guess for your lack of a better person, towards the DDA, if you could, I don't know if there's any way to send something out to the food trucks that are coming into town with the food truck rally. I'm not asking for them to create food items, but if they happen to have food items that are specifically gluten-free, there's a lot of people that have the gluten-free issue or celiac issue, and if they could just, you know, somehow advertise or note what items are gluten-free on their menus, because a lot of, even restaurants don't do that. They have gluten-free stuff, but they don't advertise that, or so on their menu, if they can make sure they specify which items are gluten-free would be helpful to people, that's all. I've been long when we're seeing that. I mentioned to Ryan, there's a bit of a water issue I've been noticing on South Street by the library there, the south, south of the library, that first house, there's water like running across the road from that, from that residence every so often, and so Ryan's gonna try to do some investigation, figure out what's going on there, so we can address that. And the last thing I had was, Ryan, I forgot to ask you earlier, where are we at with our, in order to do the capital improvement project with the planning commission, we were trying to segregate the street evaluation from that? Where are we at with the street evaluation?
Yeah, I spoke to SEMCOG, that they have some resources to officially grade the streets and prioritize them. So to make it official, you have to have two people that are Pacer certified, otherwise it doesn't count. And Bob is one, SEMCOG will send another person and the equipment to grade them and yada yada and all that stuff.
Do we have a date on that?
We don't have a date yet because he was booked through September, and we'll reconnect, and it's probably gonna be late September, early October, probably not in time for our next meeting, but that's the, so with SEMCOG, we'll get a detailed list of each street and how, where it ranks as far as, you know, what's the biggest priority, what do we need to do first, what can wait a little bit, so that will dovetail very nicely with the capital improvements plan.
And the last question there was, where are we at with the, with, I forget which company was doing the engineering on Mill Street, they're supposed to relook at that, where are we at with that?
Haven't gotten them back yet. Keith's done working on it, they did the topographical study, we're doing not just the street, but there's some ditching as well, so I think that's the, part of the delay is it's more than just the road we're looking at, it's a, it's a little bit of a bigger monster to address all the issues going on.
Do they have an estimated time of when they're looking to have a proposal?
I will find out when, we'll get the engineering back, it shouldn't be too long, and we'll go from there. So, yeah, we'll, we'll talk, Streets Committee here shortly.
Okay, that was it, thanks.
All right, I'll quickly touch on the food trucks. I hate pushing everybody to social media, but on the downtown Ortonville Facebook page, when it gets close to the week of, especially Wednesday, when you know exactly who's coming, you can, each truck's Facebook page is accessible and their menu is accessible, so you can kind of get a chance to see what, what you'd like to eat at which truck ahead of time and which lines to get in and all that good stuff, but I am definitely gonna pass that information along. We are specifically, and I say we, Courtney, is specifically conscious of vegetarian in gluten-free, in assessing, you know, a specific truck to come in to try to meet different needs, so I'm glad you brought that up again, but for everybody, go ahead and check out your menus and see what you might like to eat before you come down, and then you can kind of, like I said, see which trucks to get in line for.
And we would find that on the Ortonville.
Downtown Ortonville Facebook page, and that is the DDA's official Facebook page. And so usually she tries to post one truck a day, and like I said, you know, things change, so Wednesday's your best bet, or even Thursday, look at and say, hey, these are the trucks, and all the links to their specific Facebook pages with their specific menus will show up. So, yes, that gives you a better idea, not, not a, you know, written in stone.
And it's a perfect opportunity to plug the app that the DDA has as well, it's called Districts, check it out, you can do the walking tour, there's all kinds of good stuff.
And that's spelled?
With an X.
D-I-S-T-R-I-X, right? Or D-A-S-T-R-X.
D-I-S-T-R-X, districts.
D-I-S-T-R-X.
It's a cool, yeah, it's a cool, and you can put in any area and get all the.
Yes, it's based on your location.
The farmers market locations are on there, things like that, so it's a work in progress.
I like it.
Trying to get, you know, the businesses to interact and kind of post specials and things too, so it's, you know, obviously, it's a little bit of work for us and it takes, you know, time to get everybody involved, so hop on there if you can. Good, good point. So, besides that, I'll piggyback off Larry with all of, and Keith with all of the fun challenges last week with the power and things. Again, DPW, because massive everything floating around town, you know, garbage, trees, whatever, they were amazing, you know, walking around because there was nothing else to do, and there's no power out, and then you walk the next day and everything is cleaned up, so
Yes.
They are awesome as usual, and the challenge is that they had to work around everybody else who was all working around everybody, so, again, I like the DPW, but that's all I have today. Anything else that we forgot about?
Yeah, can I, who, if we need to set information, does IT do our website, or is it the village clerk, or who is in charge officially of our website hosting?
Yeah, our day-to-day, all the kind of regular upkeep is internal, that's our village clerk.
Okay.
IGD Solutions is who hosts our website.
Okay, and then for a revamp of it, is that IT that would revamp it with IGD?
It's a bigger conversation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because just with the branding and everything, I mean, that needs to start, yeah, so is that you or IT or Jenna?
By IT, you mean IT right, probably?
Um, no, IT committee.
IT committee, okay.
Yeah, committee certainly would want to be involved.
Yeah.
I don't want to do it, I want to know who to, who I'm supposed to speak with, who is the.
It's a bigger bear, we've talked with IGD Solutions a couple times about our contract and different things like that of, you know, how long will they host if we say we're going to go with somebody else and things like that, so we've kicked the tires on it, we haven't, you know, bought it yet, but it is a bigger conversation to change the website wholesale, but it's one we've talked about.
But I think if you're, it was just about if we wanted to modify the layouts and things like that.
Yeah, so I'll send it to all three of you, and then you all figure out, okay, beautiful. Thank you.
That was something actually we have discussed in the IT committee, is we need to review our website and see if we need to change the layout and things like that.
Yeah, we need to get our new brand logo and identity and all of that.
Send it to all three of us for the IT committee, that's technically part of our duty, so.
Okay, okay.
And anybody else who has suggestions on the website layout or things like that, please send those to all of us as well.
Thank you. All right, are we all set with items from the trustees?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I support that motion.
Right.
We have the motion on the table by trustee Dyless, supported by trustee Green. Any questions? Jenna, please.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nye Belt?
Yes.
Randabo?
Yes.
Vanis?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries 7-0. It is now 8:34, the meeting is adjourned, have a fabulous evening.